Maga crowd, it's so exciting. We're so happy to see all of you and we can't wait to hear you sing. So I'm calling the meeting to order at 4 o'clock, February 4th, and we'd like to begin with roll call. Mrs. D'Angelo?
Mrs. Partisani? Here. Mrs. Hill?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Forehand?
Here.
Mr. Bragman?
Here.
Good. Our next action is, is there a motion for adoption of our agenda?
I so move.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose say no. The motion carries 5-0. And now comes the very best, best part of our whole 24 hours day week. We get to, we get to hear from Maga and we get to hear you sing. So we can't wait. So, Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. As you know, this is always our favorite part of any board meeting is to be able to really celebrate the amazing talents, achievement, accomplishments of our students. And today, we're going to be recognizing really all things Maga Elementary, who is led by such a dynamic and caring and smart and loving administrative group, our principal, Mrs. Wendy Wood, and Mr. Rick Larson. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wendy Wood.
Good evening. Good evening, Board President, esteemed members of the board. Superintendent Dr. Pulver, Executive Cabinet, community members, our Sea Lion community, thank you for being here tonight. Please join me in welcoming 5th grade Sea Lion leaders, Austin Alvarado, Molly Bragman, and Brooke Wallace, who will be leading us in our Pledge of Allegiance and the patriotic song.
Good evening. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please help me welcome Maga's choir under the direction of Ms. Bassett and Ms. Spies, our amazing music teachers. This year's choir has almost 100 members. Our Sea Lion Choir will now sing "This Land is Your Land."
You have more cameras, keep smiling.
Alright, thank you.
There couldn't be anything more uplifting than your beautiful voices. You really made our evening and our week, so thank you. Before we go further, we want to acknowledge a very special person who's here tonight, a former United States Congressman who served us faithfully and is truly a hero of my heart. And so Congressman Alan Lowenthal, will you please stand? Of course, he's here in the capacity of a very proud grandpa. Hey, Mrs. Wood?
I would now like to introduce two other 5th grade Sea Lion leaders that will help highlight Maga, Landon Partisani and Violet Lowenthal. Good evening, Board President, Ms. Davidson, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Pulver, and Executive Cabinet and Community Members. My name is Violet Lowenthal.
And I am Landon Partisani, and we are honored and excited to highlight Maga Elementary.
I would like to just start by saying thank you. Mr. Larson and I are absolutely honored to be here tonight highlighting, showcasing, and celebrating Maga Elementary School. We feel truly blessed to lead such a special school like Maga, and I'm thankful every day, and I'm even more thankful to have Mr. Larson alongside me leading this beautiful school by the sea. To kick things off, we're going to start off with all that Maga has to celebrate. Every day is a celebration at Maga, the school by the sea. Working as a partnership with the Maga staff, who is committed to developing the academic, artistic, social, emotional, and physical well-being of all children. We believe that all students can learn at elevated levels when there are high expectations, rigorous standards, and caring involved teachers.
Every day, we celebrate raw behavior where Sea Lions earn raw bucks for exhibiting responsibility, awareness of our surroundings, and honorable with our thoughts and words. Every week, a Sea Lion from each grade level that has been awarded a raw buck will be drawn out of a hat and they'll receive a book from the book vending machine, a free set card at lunch, and they're featured in the weekly episode of the Sea Lion Splash. So far this year, the Maga staff has given out over 1,500 raw bucks to the Sea Lions. Round Maga.
CASP is one of the many pieces of data we use to drive instruction. This year, we're using the results of CASP data as one of the many metrics in guiding instruction and intervention opportunities at Maga. This data, along with district benchmarks and classroom assessments, is what we focus on for students to be successful right at Maga Elementary School. With that being said, we as educators work together to constantly refine and improve our teaching practices, monitor student achievement, and differentiate instruction based on individual student needs. Maga is in their second year of implementing morning meetings, which is a social-emotional structured routine during the day where students gather in a circle to greet each other, share personal updates, participate in a group activity, and read a morning message from their teacher. All aimed at building a positive classroom community, fostering social-emotional learning, and setting a positive tone for the day ahead. In addition, Maga has nine teachers that are participating in Los Alamitos Year 1 through 5 PD offered through education services. Teachers have the amazing opportunity to learn district signature practices, the science of reading, and much, much more. Finally, this year's staff meetings and professional development days have been set aside to train all staff members on Ruler, which is a social-emotional intelligence program developed out of Yale University. Ruler aims to help people of all ages develop five emotional intelligence skills: recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating their emotions. First instruction and high achievement are at the forefront of our mission and vision at Maga. Our teachers are taking a deeper dive into the ELA adoption by incorporating structured literacy and foundational skills. Signature practices of depth and complexity icons and CGI are also weaved throughout the day. Whole class instruction is where first instruction begins. Students then move into partner work, small group instruction, and individualized one-on-one instruction based on informal and formal assessments and anecdotal notes. If you were to walk into a Maga classroom, you would see highly engaged students and you would hear academically rich conversations, and you would feel a love for learning. Our SURF Lab offers a systematic, structured reading instructional program for students in grades K through 3rd. We also have a robust during-the-day push-in intervention in reading and math for 3rd through 5th grade students. In addition, kinder teachers offer after-school intervention through Kinder Club based on student needs. And finally, our PE instructional aid funded through the Maga PTA provides small group intervention across all grade levels.
Maga is an inclusive campus where we celebrate all Sea Lions. Our 5th grade Sea Lion leadership leads our daily morning announcements, acts as the Sea Lion Splash Spirit Team, Office Assistants, and Equipment Managers. We celebrate our community members at Maga with 90 military families in attendance. Last year, we were lucky enough to be selected to bring Anchor for Life to Maga. Anchor for Life is a peer-to-peer club to connect youth well-building, change, and resiliency skills. It provides opportunities for peers to learn leadership skills, build character, improve self-esteem, and integrate into their community. In addition, we celebrate through Week of the Military Child in April and a Veterans Day Celebration in November. Our PTA works with us to celebrate healthy habits through Red Women Week, partnered with OC Fire and Seal Beach PD.
The board, the district, and staff support and encourage social-emotional growth. A huge thank you to our district office and the Board of Education for the additional days a week of individual psych counselors and school psychologists. Another huge thank you goes out to LEAF for their donation to add wellness counselor interns. Through the support of LEAF and Maga PTA, Maga has a beautiful wellness space where students come every day during recess and lunch. Maga's wellness counselor, Tina Heron, and her interns bring excitement to our SEL monthly lessons with engaging songs and activities. Our wellness counselors also hold social-emotional groups and individual counseling sessions. Maga is also lucky to partner with our military liaison who supports us by providing military counseling on campus five days a week. Ms. Annette currently services approximately 100 students. And together, we hold events like Start With Hello and Kindness Week.
Through the arts, Maga students are connected every day. The amazing Ms. Amari leads our STEM lab where K through 5th grade students are able to participate on hands-on experiences directly aligned to grade-level standards and curriculum. This year, through Prop 28 funding, Maga has added for TK and K students. Now, Sea Lions in TK through 5th grade attend weekly music lessons where Ms. Bassett and Ms. Spies teach reading, music notes, movement, singing, and playing various musical instruments. And all students in TK through 5th grade attend art weekly with Ms. Anya. Each year, Ms. Anya works with the pageant team to solidify an artist that will be highlighted in the classroom, and their artistic techniques will be practiced in the art lab. That artist is then featured in our annual Pageant of the Arts, lead by Maga's 3rd grade teacher, Ms. Anaseto. With the support of many other Maga teachers, this year is Maga's 42nd Pageant of the Arts, being held on March 7th and March 8th, where we will be featuring the artist Banksy.
We actively engage our parents and community in our efforts to make Maga an exceptional place for students to learn. Maga wouldn't be the same without two amazing, incredible parent groups, our PTA and Project Seek. Throughout the year, our parents work tirelessly to help fundraise for our Sea Lion community and work hand-in-hand to make dreams come true for our Sea Lions. Our PTA just held its annual carnival in October and our annual Jog-a-thon just last month. Our Jog-a-thon raised over $70,000. Absolutely amazing. These fundraisers support field trips, assemblies, a book vending machine for students, our wellness room, intervention, play structure upgrades, and Come Walk in My Shoes, which we hold every year during our Neurodiversity Week. Maga's International Culture Club, also known as our ICC, is a branch of the PTA, and the ICC hosts an annual ICC Day where students visit multiple countries and they're completely immersed in the country's culture, music, dress, food, and games. It is absolutely amazing. They turn many rooms into an entire country, and it's just beautiful. Project Seek works year-round to fundraise for our STEM lab, our media center, and the art program at Maga. The annual Seek event will be held this March 28th at Old Ranch. The theme of this year's silent auction is Sea Levie to support our little school by the sea. We look forward to a beautiful evening of fundraising, celebrating, and supporting all the arts at Maga. LEAF is a huge partnership as well. They consistently donate to our wellness space and STEM lab, but we are very lucky to partner with them as they partially fund and oversee the art program at Maga. Maga has been very fortunate with several site improvements across campus. We had new fencing installed behind our Seal Beach Pony Baseball Snack Shack, which has improved campus security throughout the day. Additionally, we, Mr. Larson, made sure we had some centrally located basketball courts, and our kids are absolutely loving having them close by. Our Maga garden recently had many improvements thanks to a generous support of our PTA, which enhanced this space for the school community. In memory of two beloved Sea Lions that we lost last year, we have a reading garden and a Sea Lion play structure, which were created as a heartfelt tribute to their legacy. Lastly, through the collaborative partnership with our city of Seal Beach, Maga benefited from new window replacements and a roof upgrade to our gymnasium. We deeply appreciate all the numerous site improvements completed this school year, which continue to enrich the Maga experiences.
A commitment to education is a commitment to the whole child in celebrating raw behaviors. Maga Sea Lions bring on the spirit by celebrating many spirit days and family nights. Many of our Seal Beach community members walk and bike to school, but we love coming together as a community and partner with Seal Beach PD and OC Fire for a Walk and Bike to School Day. Every day, a Sea Lion is awarded the A for a day when we celebrate excelling in one or all of the four As: academics, athletics, activities, and attendance. Plus, we give A for the day swag and a front-of-the-line lunch pass. While we applaud and recognize citizenship and academic achievement, we are also taking the time to celebrate character or raw behavior. Sea Lion assemblies are celebrated five times a year where students are awarded for academics, character development, and the arts.
At Maga, we work to uphold regular and constant communication with our families. We work to keep our families informed through Parent Square Communications, either by email or dial-out. We also partner with our PTA and have a weekly Maga Connect that goes out every Sunday. Included is our Sea Lion Splash that Mr. Larson produces weekly. And finally, check us out on Instagram, @MagasealLions.
Our Sea Lion Splash video, put together by Mr. Larson each week, highlights upcoming events: playground rules, reminders, and kindness initiatives. It is played in the classrooms on Monday mornings. Please enjoy this special episode of the Sea Lion Splash. And now, it's time for the Sea Lion Splash. Welcome to Maga Elementary School, the school by the sea.
This is a place where we celebrate academic success, kindness, and collaboration.
We know that by working hard today, we can have a brighter future.
Maga Sea Lions show up on time.
And accept the challenge to learn new things.
We strive to be our very best each and every day.
Our scholars get to take risks and be celebrated for trying.
It's a place where you can make a huge impact no matter how long you've been a student here.
We are so excited to have you along for the journey.
There you have it, Maga. Now remember, listen to your teachers, follow instructions from your parents, take a risk, and I'll see you on campus.
Bye.
Thank you, Board of Education, Executive Cabinet. Thank you, student speakers. Thank you, Sea Lion Choir, classified staff, certificated staff, office team, custodial team, and Sea Lion community. Thanks for being here tonight, and thank you for all your support.
These guys are unbelievable. From where? Did Brooke lead?
Is Brooke here?
Brooke, come here. You get the Board of Education high honor of you are awesome because you participated in today's affair. Congratulations. Mr. Alvarado, are you still?
Come on up, Mr. Austin.
Congratulations from the Board of Education. And Violet, I know your grandpa would probably rather give this to you. I'm going to take charge. Congratulations on speaking to the board. And there's two more. But I'm thinking that maybe someone sitting up there might like to give Molly hers and Landon hers. Wait, wait. The board now recognizes that none of this would happen if we just got to see if we didn't have outstanding leadership. So on behalf of the Board of Education, you totally make a difference. You, as do you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wood and Mr. Larson and all of those involved kids. You are absolutely fabulous. Your poise, your ability to stand in front of people and share your hearts is absolutely astounding. We're so proud of you. Thank you for a great presentation that just barely touched on the greatness of Maga. I was sitting on the grass by the pier and I struck up a conversation, my husband and I did with this little girl. And I said, "Where do you go to school?" And she said, "Maga." And I said, "Well, summer's starting. Are you so excited about summer?" She said, "No." "Why not? Why have more fun at school?" And I said, "Well, more fun at school?" She goes, "Yeah, we do things every single day." And I said, "Well, are you learning?" And she said, "My brain is exploding." So that's, out of the mouths of babes comes the truth. So, and now, anybody else make comments? Yeah, we've got dads and moms here.
There's lots of dads and moms here. I, I will just say briefly, it's an honor to be a parent of a Sea Lion. And I would say I'd be proud to have my child go to any school in our district. But we moved to Seal Beach to have our child, to have our daughter, at Maga. And so, we're so thankful for every teacher, whether Molly had you or not. For every one of you students, you're so lucky to have these amazing teachers and leaders and counselors by your side every step of the day. I'm, I'm proud to see you guys sing and speak. And we got to visit campus last week as board members and not as parents, and it was extraordinary. So we're so proud of you. We can't wait to continue to see a lot. You're all mostly 4th and 5th graders. To see you excel in 4th and 5th grade and then off into middle school. So keep up the good work. And thank you, Ms. Wood and Mr. Larson. You guys are superstars.
Mrs. Partisani?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I'm honored to have this opportunity. I am going on my 12th year at Maga. Maga is, yes, 12th year of being a room parent. I can attest to the fact that Maga is such a special place. From its custodial staff to the teachers, to the leadership, to the parents who come in, come out every day and volunteer, our PTA, our SEEK. We are truly all honored to call ourselves Sea Lions. So I can attest to the fact that, you know, we are so happy that all three of our kids have gone through Maga. And, you know, not only have they really gotten exceptional learning at Maga, but they've also are walking away as well-rounded humans through the different programs that we have and the diverse culture that we have at Maga. From, you know, celebrating the military kids, Anchored for Life, Pageant of the Arts. We have, gosh, you know, International Culture Day. We really go above and beyond to create a whole child. And so, to the teachers that are all sitting in this room, to the leadership, thank you. Thank you so much.
I just can't imagine on a Sunday afternoon that I don't get to watch the Sea Lion Splash. It just charges me to go ahead for the whole week. So, that's a wonderful production, and I hope all the parents are watching it. Okay, Mr. Larson? All right, thank you.
Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, there is no school like Maga, I have to say. It's such an amazing and wonderful school, the culture. They are the only school that really has an entire community that is there to support it. Where there, I know we see some of the Seal Beach Police here. You can't go on the campus without seeing presence of Seal Beach Police in various ways, our partnerships with the city of Seal Beach with some of the facilities. But it's really, I also loved hearing, you know, all the amazing ways that you support all kids. And I think, you know, you heard Board Member Partisani really mention about the whole child, whether it be the rigorous instruction, the focus on wellness and student emotional wellness. I love the professional learning we're doing with Ruler to try to help the emotional intelligence for all students. But really even just the focus on interventions and the way that we provide exceptional Tier One instruction, which is to all students in large and small group. But then, as you really highlighted, the SURF Lab, which I loved, our targeted reading lab, our push-in interventions in math and in other areas as well, the Kinder Club that our, that our teachers provide after school, and then really the partnership with PTA and Project Seek with different positions that they help fund to... with different positions that they help fund to just enhance opportunities and provide other enrichment through PE. We got the extreme pleasure to see music, both with ukuleles and vocal music just last week, seeing the 100th Day of School. And look at, MCGA shows up, this community. We even have our former board member Scott Faiyet, who had to come and celebrate this amazing school. So, raw MCGA, what a lucky, if you're a kid at MCGA, what a lucky blessing it is. And we're so thrilled to be able to be a part. And thank you, Mrs. Wood and Mr. Larson and your exceptional staff for all that you do to support and lift kids up and make sure they thrive. I too also really love how our parents have brought together the International Culture Club to really focus on and celebrating all the wonderful similarities and differences and cultures that we have that really make an exceptional community that thrives. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pulver. So next, we have a very special presentation. Dr. Pulver, would you like to introduce that?
I would. And so we are always fortunate at these times. We, one of the things that we say that makes us such an amazing district are the parents and the groups of volunteers who go above and beyond to serve all kids, not just the rowing. And so each school gets to recognize only one individual who goes above and beyond in what we affectionately call our Hero of the Heart. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Wood, who's going to highlight this exceptional individual.
Thank you, Dr. Pulver. It is my absolute honor and privilege to recognize Cynthia Villa as MCGA's Hero of the Heart. Cynthia first became part of the Los Alamos family when her oldest daughter started at Weaver and went on to Oak and graduated from Los Alamos High School in 2019. She became a part of our MCGA family in 2018 when her third oldest started TK. Since then, she has been a constant presence on our campus, giving her time, her energy, and her heart to make MCGA a better place for all. As a dedicated mother of four children, her daughter, who works for the Orange County Sheriff, and her three boys, one in second, one in fifth, and one in sixth. She has poured her love, not just into her own children, but into all MCGA Sea Lions and the Seal Beach community. Because of her vision and determination for our school, proudly became part of the Anchor for Life program. I have to say, all of that goes to Cynthia. She had a vision, and she was going to make it happen, and she did. The program is through our U.S. Navy, and they help military-connected students find stability and friendship as they navigate all the challenges of military life. Her dedication to honoring all who serve is evident in all her thoughtful planning of our Veterans Day ceremonies, where we come together as a school to express all of our gratitude and respect. She has also ensured that our Week of the Military Child is a time of true celebration, recognizing the strengths and resilience of our students who have parents serving in the armed forces. In a world where staying connected is more important than ever, she collaborated with the school district to create a military family webpage, which is a vital resource for our military families. Her impact doesn't stop there. She has played a leading role in organizing Red Ribbon Week, instilling our students with the importance of making healthy and positive choices. And not only does she make this week very meaningful every year, she brings in our military and all our community partnerships. Seal Beach Police Department partners with us each year. Orange County Fire, Seal Beach Life Guards, our military neighbors, all present. This enriches the experience with engaging read-alouds and an unforgettable static display every year. Beyond this incredible contribution, she's also a dedicated room parent, always stepping in to support teachers, organize classroom events, and create a warm environment for our students. Coordinating celebrations, assisting with projects, simply being a steady source of encouragement and presence in the classroom. Cynthia's heart is as big as her impact. And her love for our Sea Lions, staff and community shines in everything she does. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to our students and your incredible spirit of service. Couple of awards for you. And then, we have this one that you have been put here up at the top that will be posted in our office. As our Hero of the Heart as well. Okay, Papa.
Cass Watson.
I've always wanted one of these.
The Board of Education, yours says you make a difference. And listening to that, we know you make a difference.
Thank you. Bring my family up. Okay, family, that's your call. Come on up.
I'm going to try to get through this. Thank you. First and foremost, it's by God's grace that I get to accept this honor this evening. My heart is truly overflowing with gratitude for all that I'm constantly blessed with, and I'm in amazement by the goodness he so freely gives me. To my husband, thank you. Thank you for your presence in our children's lives and your partnership in everything we do. Although, you know, although I know you wish I'd say no to taking on more, you are in constant support of all of my yeses, and I'll always love you for that. To my children, Sissy, Bear, Squeaks, and Chubs. I know you think I'm crazy, and all your friends may think so as well, but I'm okay with that. The tremendous sense of pride I have in being your mom goes far beyond the longest road trip we could ever take, and it's louder than I can ever be at any one of your sporting events. I will always shout from the rooftops or from the driver's seat at school drop-off how much I love the four of you. To say MCGA is a special place is an understatement. I've always felt I was a small-town girl growing up in a big city. My faith, my family, and freedom are values I hold near and dear to my heart. And I've always wanted my kids to grow up in an environment where those values were reciprocated. I come from a family of service. My father is a retired police officer. My mother, retired nurse. My daughter is a custody assistant with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And my sister is a dispatcher serving the cities of Seal Beach, Los Alamos, and Cypress. I'm proud to say that my family has served or is currently serving in every branch of the military. Coming to MCGA on a daily basis and being able to see men and women in uniform bringing their kids to school, whether they're defending our country or protecting our community, reminds me that my family is exactly where we need to be. I know this evening isn't a night to honor me and my service. However, there are so many people that help me on a day-to-day basis to make my visions come to life. The Seal Beach Police Department has a partnership with our school unlike any other. And there are two people in this room that I'd like to recognize for everything they do. Officer Railbrook and Officer Owen. Whether we're sitting in a police car planning Red Ribbon Week or whether you're in a second-grade class being known as Officer Sprinkles and Officer Coco, your contributions to our school are beyond measure. And I am grateful for the opportunity to serve alongside you guys and give a positive view of law enforcement to our kids each and every day. Thank you for protecting all of our Sea Lions. To my Anchored for Life crew, if you're one of my leads, can you stand up? I know Apple's over there. And we have Apple Annabelle, Taco Tommy, Muffin Man Max, Melon Molly, Blueberry Bailey. We have Lettuce Landon and Lasagna Lily. If you don't know what any of that means, I highly encourage you to find out. We are blessed at this school to have this program, and it has made such an impact, not just on our military kids, but on our teachers, our staff, and every kid that gets to walk through our school. One of the highlights of our program are kits that these young leaders get to deliver. Since we started the program not even a year ago, these kids have welcomed 19 new students to school, said goodbye to 17, sat with four kids as their parents were ready to deploy, and welcomed two kids' dads back from deployment. In addition, we have a great partnership with our military family life counselor, Ms. Z, who I don't think is here tonight, as well as Mrs. Heron. And two grief kits were given to kids who have experienced sudden death in their life. I really encourage our school district and the board members here tonight to take a look at this program and really consider implementing it at all of our school campuses. It is available by sponsorship from one of the branches of our military, and it comes along so many things that our schools already have in place. And it's so good. And the best thing about it is it's led by kids like this. To be able to see you guys lead, to be able to see you guys have a heart for others is truly something that I will never, ever forget. No matter how big you get, and no matter how far away you guys may go in school, you truly have blessed me and parents of these kids. You guys are raising amazing young adults. Finally, our military kids. This is probably where I'm most passionate of all. The first part of this year, I had to take a step back due to work commitments. And it was really hard. It was really hard to not be there. Currently, MCGA has 100 military kids on our campus, 100. And I think that's the most in any school in our district. We have Ms. Z, who truly is an angel in her own right. If anyone's a hero, it's Ms. Z. She has helped kids who came to school not willing to make eye contact with anybody because this was their third or fourth school, and they're only in fourth grade because their family moves so often, to being one of my partners in delivering kits to all of our military kids last week during Week of the Military Child. Like I said before, there's no place like MCGA. Even when teachers leave, they always come back to help, whether it's through Pageant or whether it's through helping military kids on their own time. This year, we started a new program for our kids. It's a top-secret assignment. Mrs. MC, who most of you have known, some of you may have had, although she's retired, we always see her on campus still. And she started a program where she meets with our kids every Wednesday during their lunch. And she encourages them to write poems, short stories, and to really express themselves. That lady is just, she's amazing. My son had her for third grade, and I've never seen him excel in so many ways. I'm so grateful for her consistent and continuous contributions to our school. Finally, Ms. Wood and Mr. Larson, thank you. Thank you for embracing my big ideas. Thank you for listening to me when I catch you with a popsicle in your mouth and finding time to sit with me and figure out how we're going to do this and get things into Sea Lion Splash on a Friday afternoon. Ms. Wood, thank you so much for seeing a lot of my projects through, giving me the green light and signing off on some of those things that were forgiveness projects instead of permission ones. MCGA is truly a special place. It may be a school by the sea, but I think it's Los Alamos Unified's best-kept secret.
Mrs. Partizani?
Okay, not so fast. I want to say something. Well, I have had the privilege of knowing Cynthia for many years. We became fast friends on the PTA, and our sons are friends. And so everything you heard, and of course, you can see that it's all true. But I do want to just add two things. You always want Cynthia on your team, figuratively and literally. Literally because you can hear her from miles away cheering every team, every child, every student. You know, she is always positive, always encouraging. And secondly, because she has a heart of gold. She jumps in wholehearted and gives of herself, of her time, with, you know, so generously and without expecting anything in return. So, thank you, and I just couldn't let this opportunity go without really congratulating you.
Thank you very much.
Well deserved.
Thank you so much. That was absolutely amazing. And thank you for what you do for our families and how you teach our kids to honor and appreciate all of those who keep us safe. So thank you. Now, we're moving on to another special award. And Dr. Weisright and Dr. Pulver get to lead this one. Sure.
I won't move your speech.
Thank you.
Well, we are elated to be able to recognize one of our Classified Employees of the Year. I'm going to call her up, and then I want to have, a few of us are going to speak many wonderful things about her. But she's just an exceptional employee, Ms. Cynthia Hughes. Please come on up. So we have over 400 classified employees, and each year we get to recognize about three of them in different categories. And it was such an extreme pleasure for many of us. And I think there were a lot of us who came to the classroom. It was towards the end of December, we were in Mrs. Breedlove's classroom. And immediately in front of the kids, I was talking with the kids and letting them know we were here to recognize an exceptional employee as one of our Employees of the Year. And all of their eyes turned towards Cynthia. It's like they knew already what an exceptional individual who goes above and beyond. She's been with us since 2007 and has worked, you know, over seven years in always giving herself, giving her heart and her soul, her sense of humor, her compassion, in reaching, you know, all kids. She's worked mostly at MCGA, a little bit at Oak. I'm told that you've done some great work as well with our preschool program at times, or preschool students at times as well. But also, she's willing to volunteer. You know, our fifth graders go to OSS, and we want to make sure that that's available for all of our kids. And so she's often been willing to be able to go up to support some of our students who need some additional support to be able to attend outdoor science school. And so we just are thrilled to be able to recognize you. And I'm going to turn it over now to Mrs. Wood, who wants to share a little bit more personal stuff about you, Cynthia.
Thank you, Dr. Pulver. It is with great pride and excitement that we announce Cynthia Hughes as one of this year's Los Alamos Unified Classified Employees of the Year. Cynthia joined our district in 2017 as a Special Education Instructional Assistant, where she spent five months at Oak Middle School and ultimately finding her home at MCGA. For the last eight years, she's been an integral part of MCGA's success. She brings positivity, inclusion, warmth, a dedication for students, families, and staff. Cynthia's impact on our students is absolutely immeasurable. She fosters the academic, emotional, and social growth with unwavering support and care. Her nurturing approach helps students feel comfortable, they feel confident, and her sense of humor creates a joyful atmosphere wherever she goes. Teachers often request her support in their classrooms because of her collaboration, her support, and the ability to make the classroom environment even brighter. She goes above and beyond, like Dr. Pulver mentioned. She volunteers both before and after school. She goes on all field trips. She attends outdoor science school for a week. She has even braved the plane with some of us for a fourth-grade Sacramento trip. And she even is with us during summer programs. She knows every single student by name. She takes the time to contact or connect with them personally. She takes the time to contact or connect with them personally and remembers the details that make every child feel special. Her genuine care leaves a lasting impression. Please join us in welcoming and congratulating you on this big honor. Cynthia, I was fortunate enough to be there when that happened, when you were announced, and it really, truly was a celebration. You were a rock star with those kids. They were so excited for you. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we just want to thank you. There are job descriptions, but when you hear everything that's been shared about you, that little job description that's very concise would be pages and volumes long, all filled with your heart and your spirit and all that you give to kids. So, we're so deeply appreciative of what you do. Well, I'm not going to break it. On behalf of the Board of Education, we want to present you with this award and the entire district.
All right, Cynthia, you get to speak soon. Millions of congratulations. Very well deserved. This is from Leif, our partners at Leif. It is a gift card for you as a congratulations for being our Employee of the Year. Oh, wait, there's more!
Now, you got a trophy. You got flowers.
A gift card.
A gift card. But now, you get the Medal of Honor. Yours says "You Are the Best" from the Board of Education.
Wow. Cynthia, you're kind of a hard act to follow. I would just like to thank everyone that has supported me in this long tenure I've had at Maga. Both of my children went to Maga, so that was five years for one and six years for another, because we did the DKU at the time. And I've been working there now six years as well. So, I feel like I've been there just as long as you have. I love what I do. I love the kids that I get to work with every single day. And I have worked in almost every classroom we have at Maga, I believe. And no grade level is different than the other. They are all equally talented teachers that I've worked with, all of them. And I thank you all for this wonderful award. Thank you.
Just a couple other certificates to match the award. We have a certificate from the Board of Education. And as a classified employee, our Personnel Commission, who oversees the merit system within our district. So, congratulations. Oh, please introduce your family in the mic.
In the mic, yeah. We got to recognize them.
Spencer, my senior, can you stand? Allison, my graduate from Long Beach State, can you stand from Maga? And my husband Keith.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Don't leave, because we need to take some pictures. Mrs. Picciardo, the choir did you already get? Okay, so choir, guess what? There are cookies in the back foyer, so-- That's like an appetizer before dinner. But we need families.
Yeah, at the recess, we'll take pictures of our students. Austin, Molly, Brooke, Landon, and Violet. We'll take pictures of all Maga staff who are here in the room, are here of the heart. Cynthia, and I guess you had to be Cynthia today to get an award. So, Cynthia and Cynthia will take pictures of you as well.
OK, so we're going into recess and enjoy the cookies.
Great names.